Agenda for today. First, I want to recap a little bit on the last meeting and then move over to... It's becoming a pretty standard agenda in a way. It's a quick check-in on workgroup progress, both for the structured workgroup and the podcast workgroup. And then give an update on the tasks and rewards. That's all I have. Trying to aim to stay within the one hour timeframe, but we'll see if we can manage this time. Does anybody have something to add to the agenda by any chance? Because it's entirely possible. And if not, we'll... Move to the next. No, this is actually on the workgroups. Let's do a quick recap of last week's meeting. Basically, yeah, the thing that we started last week is setting up the dWork page for tasks and keeping track of everything, but it's still in progress. It's getting there slowly. Of course, not as quickly as I want to, but that's all right. I did not yet get approval for the Gitbook to become a public... What's it called? Like to get a non-profit subscription, let's say. But I do think we would qualify, so I imagine next week I'll be able to happily announce that it is actually approved and good to go. Let's see. Yeah, most of what we covered last week was then went on to the workgroups and the tasks and rewards, so might as well cover that when updating. Well, let's see. So there's the workgroups update. First of all, on the incubation/structure workgroup, which is in dire need for a proper name still. Maybe you should put a dWork task for coming up with an actual name. Could be good. You know what? Just gonna do that. Yeah, we were working on the dWork page. You can actually show it, because why not? It did get decently updated. This is the... Basically, there's two projects. One's got Team Tasks, has a bit of a generic tasks. And then there's the translation section, which is properly populated right now. I added a whole bunch of verification tasks, which... Yeah, it's also something I want to discuss in a bit. It's a bit of manual work, but that's completely fine for now. We'll get that process moved out over time. There's already people actively applying for verification as well. So that's moving along. I added the May community update blog in the... Let's see, where are we? Yeah, the ecosystem update blog post for May in the five languages. And that brought me to an interesting situation, which I would like to also have a little temperature check on to see what's good. Basically, there's two people who applied for one task. Yeah, that made me wonder like, okay, cool, better than zero, but still, how to deal with this? Yeah, I'm going to have a little check-in with everybody, like, how do we deal with this? I mean, there's timestamps, so you can clearly see... Well, they were not at exactly the same time. So time could be a factor. Previous work could be a factor. So yeah, I figured, let's have a little check-in on what do you guys feel? How should we deal with multiple people applying for the same task?
Out the one with the coolest Discord name.
Nice, nice.
I will check if both of them don't have another task ongoing. Like who has least work to do gets the task. Or if both submit the task and it is not yet assigned, then the one who submits their work first.
Yeah, okay.
It will give a risk to another person, but it adds this more priority in a sense of, oh, I take a task, I don't now go waiting for somebody, I'm just gonna do the task. And if it's somebody else does it at the same time, well, at least you signal that you're doing it. You have the Discord link to discuss that I'm doing it. And that, I think, it shows opportunity for people to collaborate with each other. And if they're gonna do a task and they realize, oh my God, somebody was faster, maybe the next time they think about it, to just do a heat check with the discussion first.
Absolutely. And certainly give them an opportunity to work it out and decide amongst themselves. Maybe, you know?
I just don't know if I quite agree with that, just because I think it could present some potential, like, I don't know if we'd want to call it resentment or anything like that, but like, and it doesn't really see... It could create some friction between the people, which maybe that's not the worst thing in the world. Maybe that's fine, but on top of that, I was thinking it's... Maybe it is the better way to do it, but it could also be a sense of you're having two people work on the same thing. One of them's not gonna get used, so it's like not the best use of that second person's time. So I just don't know. I'd have concerns about that in that way. But I don't know.
Yeah, I agree. I would also feel a bit bad about having somebody do the work, but then, yeah, not get the reward because... Yeah, just because it's too late or something like that.
I think it kind of depends on the size of the task as well. So if it's a relatively small task, it probably first in, first served makes sense. Obviously, if someone's grabbing lots, then that doesn't work after a period of time. But if the task much bigger, then there probably needs to be a more formal of understanding of how to get a larger task assigned to yourself.
One really simple thing is, for example, you can say on dWork on the task, you can assign task points, right? So what you do is already established, like for example, SQL, for example. So like for mentioned, for example, easy translation video, ah, cool, everybody can do it. And then you can set up boundaries of tasks, that's why I say, hey, you need minimum already earn 10 task points. You include this into the task, right? So you avoid already a little bit too much run on maybe two broad tasks, where you not want to have newcomers, maybe. It's why you want to have more trusted people. And by assigning task points, maybe it helps a little bit to structure the thing.
I was just thinking, is there any way to make the dWork so where someone assigns themselves to it, it gets shut off from further assignments for other people to come in? Because that could potentially... I don't know if that's a good idea, but it could be a way of avoiding multiple people checking in for work that is technically something that one person could do. You could just shut it. Once it gets assigned, there's a certain period of time where it's locked to them. And then there could be further touching base with that person and making sure that this stuff is getting done. But that could be a way. What do you guys think about that?
Well, technically, I don't think there's a setting for that. Doesn't look like it. I mean, you could do it based on Discord roles. So then if somebody has the role of being an ambassador, for example, or translator, it doesn't matter, they can skip the application process and just claim and work on it. They don't need to wait for getting assigned. That's a way. I mean, technically, we could set this Discord role at just being a member of the Discord and then anybody can always just claim instead of having this application, right?
It might be useful to know who was interested in doing a task in terms of expressing their interest, because going forward, I think we also want to make sure that, well, we're allowed different people to have a chance to... So it's not always the same people can look back to you. This other person has applied two or three times. We'll give them kind of first go and the next time comes up. That's a thought.
Yeah, yeah, it's tricky. Like you can see, there's roughly one hour or less even, 45 minutes in between these applications. So if I was watching this right when person A applied, and I would simply assign it, because yeah, why not? Go ahead.
It's weird that the application itself says that it's seven days older than KiloChain.
Well, no, I think KiloChain provided the range for the work to be done. It's not the age, but it's like this is in the future. So I think basically it was like an estimate of like, well, within this period, this task. So it's a bit tricky. It looks like Mr. Hats would finish it today even, zero days. Not sure if that's like really... Yeah, if that should be a factor. It can be. But it's just a bit... Yeah, it depends on me sitting and watching the screen. And then, yeah, if there's the first person to claim the task, I would assign it, I guess. But now, within this time, yeah, somebody else also. Yes, I'm not sure how to deal with that. Also, basing it on, like you can see on the in-progress, this... You can see Hats did provide the task today. He finished the verification of a translation. So, but that also can argue both ways. Like it could say like, well, you already had a task today, right? So now it's time for the other person. Or you could reward him for already doing a task by giving him more tasks. So, yeah.
Just get more tasks in there, so there's more for people to do, I guess.
Sure. Maybe there's... Well, whichever gets the design, the other one can verify the translation, I imagine. But it's, yeah, it's like 25% of the token, so, yeah.
Maybe there's scope for collaboration as well, if people want to work together on tasks? I don't know.
Technically, they can start verifying each other's work. Because there is a working pair right now, because they are both on the same translator stuff. So I wouldn't then... I don't see too much problem here until it actually scales to that level that so many people want to do tasks. And I think that's a great problem to have. Right now, it's just probably something rare. And right now, even if it's like two or three people starting to do this specific translation task, it's gonna be easy to rotate them. I would follow just like the first person who to complete and just to check how many work they already are. So they just don't do like, I'm gonna accept all of them. I'm not giving room, but doing them like one by one. And over time, if it's like, you cannot see it's gonna get skewed that only one people are doing tasks, where he's like very fast respond, then bring that issue up. Right now, I think it's too early to think about the entire process, because it's very rare.
Yeah, sure.
I would rather tell everybody, if you see another person who are assigned this task, go into discussion with him directly. It's the way to start. And then organize who verifies, who translates, how to do it together.
Aggression. And what is this? I want to discuss.
When someone applies for or signs themselves, attempts to assign themselves to a project, the next person coming in, if they go to assign, can they actually see that someone's already like gone in for that job? Is that something they could have seen going in?
Yeah, I believe the activity at the bottom here is visible regardless of being locked in.
Yeah, I was just thinking, maybe like you could say the first person to assign themselves, it's theirs. But then there's the option for collaboration, where if the first person says, hey, you want to split this in half, they could split the project in half or something like along those lines if they wanted to. Otherwise, I wonder if there's a way to put the second person who applied. I guess there could be multiple that apply, you know, more than just two eventually for some of these. But put priority perhaps on the next couple people for future similar projects? I don't know if that would work.
Both for translation, definitely, because that's gonna be recurring.
Because I mean, like, it's, I think there is some importance to the fact of someone getting there first and being, you know, very on top of getting something done. There should be potentially some, you know, value for that. But then at the same time, you don't want, you know, multiple people are jumping, people are jumping in all the time and you don't want to push those other people out, you know, at the same time. So it's like, yeah, it's very complicated situation, it seems like figuring this out. But it doesn't have to be, but there's a lot of different moving parts here for considering, you know, being fair to everyone and, you know, taking the time into consideration. I think it can be good to, you know, actually, you know, create sort of like competition in certain ways, but we don't want to have it be so much friction that, you know, it's not... We want to have the right amount of friction, I guess, to where it's getting the job done as quickly as possible, but not so much that it's turning people away from helping in the future, getting, you know, upset with the way things are done.
Yeah, fair.
Really think that categorization may help a lot.
Sorry. Could you repeat?
I think that categorization is really important. So to say already, okay, when you speak about the task where simply two people wouldn't even make sense to get the task done, you have a very specific one. Then you have those already, then where you say, hey, that you want to have several, multiple applications for it already. But how would such a project look like already? Which project requires two or more people to get executed? And when we speak about this scenario, it directly includes already, ah, okay, now we need a coordinator for this as well. Because when those people now come together and to collaborate, who coordinates the collaboration then? Because there needs to be a reviewer. A reviewer for individual is easy. You just check and, oh, okay, cool. But how do you review a collaboration? So you go into totally own category already, where you have to define also the roles behind to say, ah, okay. Then you need something like community coordinator or something like this. People who are able to facilitate the collaboration process. And this can... For each and different categories, for example, if you set up a project, you make this project, for example, in dWork. I mean, when you set up a project like a category, where you can create all your tasks, you can make this accessible to specific groups, which you have in Discord, for example, right?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, plenty of considerations. I think just to, for now, I think what would make sense is to assign based on time of application. But also, I'll just DM both of them in a three-way conversation and see like if they want to cooperate. I mean, it's a big block post, so technically it can be split in half. Or perhaps KiloChain would be happy doing the verification only. And also apologies to Hats and KiloChain for calling it specifically like this. It's just, yeah, it happened like this, nothing personal, of course. Does that make sense? To find it on time?
Well, for in this situation, I would myself choose KiloChain, because Hats already completed the translation to have that diversity that now Hats goes and verifies what KiloChain did and KiloChain verifies what Hats did. And then if both accept each other's work, we have some kind of results of, oh, they trust each other's translations. They think both are doing great work. If there is now discrepancy between like one says that I don't like his work, he do our work better, then we have now a trust mismatch and we need a third person.
But for context, Hats so far did not submit any translation, only a verification of a translation.
Ah, okay, then it's, then Hats.
Okay. Yeah, sorry for perhaps completely overthinking this or making, being, you know, zooming in way too much. But yeah, I mean, it's probably gonna happen more, more multiple times. So that makes me want to, yeah.
This was introduction to what is happening in working groups, the processes and governance and all of that stuff. So everybody who's down to do have that, we'd like to have like these two working groups every week to kind of refine how we work with dWork, because there are so many ways you could handle it. And if we just have a place where we write it all down, have like a Google Doc where we can comment, look at it, but we still need some working group to actually put effort into that. Takes step by step, takes time.
Yes, definitely. Okay, I'll go ahead and assign and I will... I'll do the DMing outside of the, after this meeting.
Yeah, I think it's important to talk about these things and get into the nitty-gritty of everything, because this is where everything is being formed. So we want to make sure we have everything built out the way we want it before. Like you said, it gets bigger and bigger and bigger, then it's gonna be harder to change things if we see that things need to be changed. So I think it's good to do this now and throughout the whole process.
It'll be an ongoing effort, I'm pretty sure. But also learning, learning keeps stacking up as well, so.
Oh, evolution.
It is, yes. And well, we kind of touched on the third bullet on here. I was, yeah, like, like David mentioned. If there's people interested in figuring out exactly this, this kind of stuff, I think it would make sense to have like a weekly session, yeah, like a workgroup session, perhaps early at the beginning of the week or at the complete end of the week to prepare for the next week. But to have like a little check-in on all the open tasks and see what needs to be tinkered with, what's going on. So if anybody is interested in that specifically, I'll make... I'll put something in chat where people can reply on that. So yeah, that showed around the dWork a little bit. Did finish up the signup form and also Gitbook is now, should be live. However, I published all the pages, but I cannot get the menu to work at the site still. That's, I'm not sure what's up there. Like there's a bit of a menu. Is it sure? Yeah. Perhaps that all works when we, when we've got this actual non-profit license going on. But basically, yeah, it's covering the basics. I wanted to be a single source of truth for the ambassador program to support on the dWork page. And just providing a couple of steps, how to join, how to get started. It's a little signup form, which I do really like the embedding of the... The embedding options Gitbook provides. For this one, this is the, it's like a rework of the signup form we had earlier, like also asking about relevant areas of expertise and such. And split out the content creation stuff a little bit. If there's anybody watching who filled this in before, you can provide an update to your previous submission. Made a little... Uh, yeah, we were, me and Ian were looking into actually implementing some, like an embedded calendar, but that did not quite work out. It was, yeah, not there yet. If anybody has any experience with embedding a calendar into Gitbook, do let me know. Yeah, we ended up just pasting the schedule here, because, well, kind of works. But yeah, if anybody has experience in embedding calendars, then please reach out. My robots are embedded. But slow, apparently.
We have videos open. Yeah, regarding this meeting notes, I wondered if at some point we can want to, like, a new version, in like a snapshot of where, okay, to reduce the amount of like stickies we are collecting. And then it opens up much faster in embedded programs and for people, computers themselves.
So perhaps we can make like a monthly, if that makes sense? Just thinking a lot, but perhaps we can like, once every month, get like a, yeah, a final state and then archive that for the, for the, and then next month start a new one? Does that make sense or?
Yeah, basically something like that. It doesn't add extra kind of work, but this duplication versioning, setting it up, first time it takes a bit of work time, but after you have two, a consistent, same activity all the time, it's about like five-minute action, actually. First time it's like 50 to 20 minutes. Yeah. Designed and way to kind of make a dashboard of the history.
I think the best way to solve a community calendar is to don't have a community calendar, because it never works, because there's just so fucking much going on everywhere, especially as it grows. The best, the best on my side is really experience to say, recurrence. These calls each day, same time, same day, each week, same day, same time, day and same time. And you just need to display this then, right? Then you can say, hey, ambassador podcast call, for example, or tech, tech, tech. And you just have your short note of the event. And say, hey, it's each day, each week, same day, same time, same Zoom link, same Discord channel, same meetup link, whatnot. But from experience, I think that's the most easiest way for the community to catch up with stuff, because there's everything changed all the time. So certain recurrence and constancy is really helpful.
Okay, so that's done, I guess.
You see? We're the calendar then.
Uh, let's see. Oh, yeah, then there's a page of, on the distribution of rewards, just outlining the budget and spend. Budget carries over. Last day of the month is day of distribution. And then I think this is properly embedded? Yeah. It's like from last week, what got dispersed. And then, yeah, this will simply be added to over time. And I think I mentioned this earlier and might be in this text as well. But yeah, the idea is to have once a month at the end of the month. And but I do think initially now with the setup, it might make sense to have a couple additional, like... setup, it might make sense to have a couple additional, um, like mid-month, um, disbursements. Um, yeah, that's, that's kind of the current state of this Gitbook. Um, it does need a bit more work. Uh, the guides for how to, to work on DWork, for example, would be, uh, good to put on here. Um, yeah, I think by now it would be clear that if you feel like wanting to help out with this, do reach out and, uh.
Uh, I created some TWork guides related to accepted tasks, so maybe those can be copy pasted here. Right now I put them on Google Doc under the one of the ambassador tasks.
Yeah, I did see this, um.
There.
That's actually right. Hmm, this is the wrong one. Ah, yes, this is also nice, um. Yeah, for people to check out, uh, won't go into it right now. Um, yeah, for clarity, we could, I guess, link it on the, on the My RoboD. Um, but yeah, pointing that from Google Doc to, uh, to Gitbook is relatively straightforward luckily. But I think it would make, uh, make sense on, on the Gitbook to have like a, a little, on the getting started, uh, for example. Just have it here, provide a little guide on what's needed and how everything works. Um, alright, then onwards, um.
Open task, Peter, to set up a DWork introduction?
Hmm, well, um, it's been, it's, it's a little over, all over the place, to be honest. I think there's a couple of related tasks, um.
I think this one we created the last time, but I added, but it, it was, it's a double thing, it's the same thing, so I just uploaded it again.
But I do think there was another one.
So just can see the translate, verify it, write the log.
I'm not what you're looking for right now.
Uh, I'll pretend I do know. No, it's the same one.
No, no, this is, we had three documents, you were in the right place, but it's, it's some reason it didn't open, the link, what it provided. But yeah.
Uh, so to answer your question, um, yes, there's a task, there's multiples.
What task you're looking for?
For setting up an introduction to DWork.
So we did, this was a subtask, but it, it's not, this one you looked at, there was a discussion that we don't do an introduction for DWork as a guide to people who want to create tasks or in, in a sense, we have a task creation guide, but not like how to use TWorks, because it's quite straightforward and rather have like a training sessions. We could theoretically use Catalyst, United Catalyst server, which is a Cardano server, where they also do DWork tasks and they are following for now, everybody who wants to learn about DWork, to come into active working sessions. So we could coordinate there to give the same dates and times in this server who want to learn how to do tasks or bounties or whatever in an ask questions live. And then we could like do some cross collaboration based on learning. But creating a task to like map out and document how to use DWork is a lot of overhead in this current situation where we, we just need few people who, who work on that and get the working group together and then maybe they could do the tasks themselves, like, but that would require then a specific budget per month we, that everybody would be agreeing that, hey, we, these people are gonna do this working group, these are, they're gonna meet here, they're gonna prove that what they're doing and we're expecting from them some progress. And like, I don't know, every week they share five minutes in town hall what they brought and then they validate the tasks and if, if they do it four times, then maybe end of the month they get like two thousand or three thousand AJX pay, or whatever, then monties, what we kind of all agree. That could get that more started, um, rather than just a task, because else if you're just gonna, I don't know. Because there's so many dead ends, you don't know how much you want and when you want to quit, so just have a progress there and show what, where, where is this progress moving towards and when it stops, then it's, okay, now it's done.
Yeah, well, in a way I feel like, um, yeah, the, the whole description of, yeah, just pick a task at DWork and, and you can start working on it. And that needs just a little bit more, like there's, there's some in-between step between just this one line and, and having like a full-fledged how to DWork, um, yeah. I think I'll just fill this up a little bit more with, you know, a bit more explanation so that people who want to buy, who don't, yeah, they don't have to wait now for this guide to be completed, because it sounds like.
This guide is already completed, you, you didn't open it in some reason, you mean the?
I think we had the send this afternoon, I could not manage to click the right thing.
Scroll down, there is a DWork task guide, subtasks, not this one, subtasks, yes, and this one. Why you don't, you don't get to open it in some reason?
I'm not sure, it's happened before as well. There we go, yes, this is more than enough to get somebody started. Yes, perfect. Alright, well, uh, I'm not finding the topic, I feel, yes.
You have to approve his work, back to DWork.
I know.
DWork's first.
Yes, these things maybe should happen in the, in the working group to approve and stuff.
Yeah, fair.
Uh, right now I guess the ambassador program, this is, or everything.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think that's done everything where except the community podcast. Um, let's see, I think both Julian and Architect are around, so would either one of you be uh, able to give a little update?
Sure. Um, Architect, do you wanna, um, start or do you want me to start?
Uh, it should, you, you are more fluent than me, so, sure.
Alright, um, so last week, uh, Crandano, um, there was a few of us there and, um, we were talking about how the first episode, um, because of the fact that we're trying to hone in the video portion of it with doing interviews and me specifically, um, there's a couple of things that I've written that I, I think what I wanna do is I have the big kind of mission statement, um, that I wrote in, um, on the My RoboD and that, um, I think, and then I also wrote a piece about the ambassador program, because we were thinking the ambassador program may be a good idea for the first episode, just kind of highlighting different aspects of that. Because we don't wanna end up getting into a situation where we start doing these elaborate interviews with people and because we don't have the skillset yet or the right people implemented, video editing and that stuff, we end up messing some of that stuff up with some bigger interviews that we don't wanna end up messing any of that up. So instead highlighting, um, the ambassador program in general and what, what's been going on with it, um, so a couple of things I plan on doing, you guys can chime in on this and we can talk about it, uh, some more. But, um, I have the mission statement that I wrote on the My RoboD. So I think what I wanna do is I wanna actually just record myself, um, reading that out. I've also made a, um, sort of, um, talk about the ambassador program and what it means to me, um, in general as well. So a couple of things like that, um, I can put out the actual text in the community, um, podcast Discord. I can add that second piece that I have about the ambassador program into the My RoboD as a sticky note. And then me, myself, record those and those, we're, we're kind of in a situation where I can record myself. Um, I could probably also do the interviews in-house, um, with everything I have. Um, where it's just me talking to the camera, there may not be a need for, as long as I can, you know, do it to the point where it comes out succinctly, um, there may not be editing, um, something that needs to be edited from that, so that could just be a way of me putting it out there and everyone taking a look at it. Um, we, we're basically in need of people who have better video editing skills and people that are good with video, or audio to basically check the work and see, um, another thing we had talked about was lighting. I have lights here set up, um, so I have the lighting situation down for me. If I'm interviewing people, you know, and they're on their own home internet and their own webcams and own microphones and stuff, that's a separate story, um. But yeah, getting these couple of things that I'm basically saying that we may wanna put in for a piece, uh, edit that in for the video, maybe at the beginning or some point in that video, um, that's separate, that doesn't really need video editing, it may, I mean, basically, I think if I just do the recording a few times until, um, I get it right, that may not need any video editing. But what we do wanna work on is have some people who can help with the video editing. And in that sense, I thought we should have somebody in the ambassador program, um, do an interview with me, like a small one, because we need to check how that's gonna work out and, you know, we may just wanna have someone just in the ambassador program, like one of us or one of the community podcast people. Um, I don't know the first one that we wanna try to bring in, you know, Yon or maybe like Ben or something, where we're just trying to figure stuff out. So, but I, I do think it's important for us to do an interview with someone so that we can have that up and then that's where a video editor would come in, because I don't really know how to video edit at this point. I have some, I have like the software to do it, but I just don't, I'm just getting into it now and learning how to do it. So there was a couple of people we had reached out to, I know TiVo, you said you had a friend that was potentially interested and then there was another person, Bork, uh, that is in the ambassador program that said they actually know how to video edit as well. Um, so that's basically where I'm at, um, I'm planning on doing those, um, recordings later on today. So that will be up either later on tonight, um, Eastern Standard Time, so later tonight or sometime in the morning before noon, uh, tomorrow, I'll have the, um, actual, just me speaking to the camera with these things. Uh, we don't have to use any of it, but we need to start actually putting something out there to check, to see at least levels and this and that and get comments. So that's what I plan on doing, uh, and then we just need to, it looks like Architect had reached out to them and said, hey, you know, if you guys are interested, then reach out to me. I haven't gotten any direct messages from anyone, I don't think yet about that, but I could also reach out to them and say, hey, you know, we know we started talking about this. TiVo, do you have anything to add on, on your friend there or you said he wanted to learn more about what was going on?
Yeah, basically, uh, I think yes, then video is needed, like the material that here is the thing you need to edit. And then we got to come up together, uh, like requirements, what, what we even want, do we want thumbnails? Do we want gifs in background? Is it just a sound? Or do that, there has to be some moving objects or this is, or the edit is just to make sure it's, uh, quick, like, like speed up and cut like some sentences, silences to make it very smooth? Should, should there be fade effects, like all of these stuff, requirements are needed in order to kind of capture how much time it actually therefore goes into us, um, then, yeah, then it comes. Then he knows even if he's interested to do that, how, how serious is this group?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can go as far into that or less as we want. I mean, like we could go on and on and on with all these different effects and B-roll and all this extra stuff, but at a certain point, we have to have a cutoff as far as if we're gonna be, Peter, you can chime in on this, as far as like, you know, AJX rewards, there's only a certain amount, you know, that can be allotted to stuff, so we don't wanna go overboard, um, with things. But obviously, we wanna make sure that at least the bare minimum is done and it, you know, the audios, the audio is, is good and the levels are right, um, you know. Um, maybe some editing with a little bit of like the extra, um, talking where it's not really adding anything could be cut out, something like that. Um, as far as more video effects, I just don't know, I mean, I'd love to have as much as possible, but I just worry asking too much, we might not be able to fulfill the amount of like rewards or quote unquote pay that they would want for that sort of thing, so do you have any thoughts on that, Peter?
Well, I guess, um, yeah, at some point we would need to establish a, well, how many tokens there would be available for the, for the community podcast and right now, there's, there's no decision made to that, um, at all. And then, yeah, it would make sense to, to, looking at, um, everything that's being done, I, I think, would at least make sense to have like ten percent of the total tokens of the month. But yeah, that's a bit of an arbitrary number, you know, um.
Maybe that's something we can actually address in our meeting on Friday, we can try to put that towards the front, because it seems like we're getting to the point now where we're actually doing this stuff and we need to start figuring out that, so that can, we can, I think we should push that to, towards the top, um.
Yeah, makes sense. Um, so then, I guess what, what could happen is that the podcast work group comes up with a suggestion to then discuss in the town hall, I think that would be the elegant way of, of doing it. Disregarding overlap of people, because there is overlap, but yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so yeah, we can put that on the itinerary for Friday's meeting and then whoever is involved, you guys can think about it. Uh, between now and then, we can always talk more in the community discord or the, uh, community podcast discord about it. Um, yeah, and then I think, Peter, you'll be instrumental in that, because you have a better idea of, like you said, the total amount of tokens and what, you know, makes sense for our specific project in the grand scheme of everything.
Hmm, that might lead to an issue actually with, um, my availability on coming Friday will be stupidly low, to be honest, visiting, visiting a festival for the first time since years.
Oh, that's cool. Oh no, that's okay, um.
Help.
I mean, I'm, we can meet, I can, we can, I'm down to find another time as well, if you wanted to change the day or if we wanted to meet separately with some of us who are interested to talk more with you, even for a few minutes or you could write something down as far as guidelines of what you think.
Yeah, of course, I mean, um, yeah, I, I feel me not, not attending a meeting should not make that much of a difference, so definitely, um.
Architect, do you have anything else to add to what I was saying, um, at all?
I don't know, no, well, not, uh, I agree with you, Julian, uh, just hit for the bare minimum at the beginning, just to, we can roll on and kind of set the level, but then, uh, But then I guess it's very nice if we're gonna polish, polish the podcast if we feel that it's okay, we can do something here and something like that. And so just to kind of make it more, well, attractive, maybe. I don't know. So we may have additional, maybe if we have a need, of course, to bring maybe some paid people by Ajax, Ajax rewards. But then we come to this discussion, of course, that how much do we have, how much should we consume? And that depends on, of course, how much skill we in the group can gain and utilize. So but to sum it up, I agree with you, Julian. We just kick off with what we have and try and kind of do what you suggested. You post some suggestions and be kind of elaborate and have someone that can tweaks, tweak maybe on some levels and et cetera. So but that's the only thing I can say, I believe. Right? Yeah.
Yeah, my, my intuition is kind of leaning towards the idea of like less is more at the beginning. We want to have it so that, you know.
Sorry, just to interrupt. Young, welcome, welcome.
Okay, cool. Yeah, Young. Yeah, Young's been speaking. He wanted to show up. He's interested in translations and we've been talking, so.
Welcome. But can I request for now to quickly mute yourself a little? Because otherwise the recording will be very fuzzy and it won't be possible to hear what's being said.
I guess not. Fun, fun.
There's a little microphone at the bottom there. If you just click it. If you can hear us, it's that little microphone you just put a, yeah, perfect.
Well, you get to just to talk later on, no worries there.
But yeah, I was just going to say like, my intuition is just that we do maybe, we want to just make sure we get these, start getting these episodes out. We, we don't want like perfection to be the enemy of good, as they say, where we do so much that I think it's just better to get it good enough at first and just start working on things as opposed to trying to have everything perfect before we start doing stuff. Because I think it could just, it's just gonna be more difficult that way. That's my opinion. But I'd love to hear other opinions on that. We can talk more on Friday or whenever. Also, I just wanted to mention about like that interview that I was talking about. If anyone had any ideas on who that should be at all, that's something I need some, I would like some input on as to who we think that could be, just as like a, not to downplay them as a member of the community or anything, but as like a, we need a way to start working on these videos and seeing whether the interview style we start off with is going to work. Any thoughts on that? I would need help on that.
I guess I wouldn't really mind volunteering, but yeah. At the same time.
I know, I know. We don't have to use you, Peter. Really, we don't. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be you. I know you were saying that it's not really your cup of tea and that's, that's fine. I mean, I think one of us could just interview, you know, each other. I don't know if anyone, you know, Architect or anyone in the community.
Yeah, I had one idea at some point where if we will start using more Ajax, like having like actual treasury team or audit where we give stuff out for people. And then after one, like right now, we're just doing piloting basically anyway. But the next month, probably there are people now with the pounds who translate. And there will be these people, hi, how, how did you find these translation tasks? And how do you feel this process is going? And having like small, like I don't know, 50 to 30 or maybe 30 minute discussions related to these people who already contribute to the system. And as we grow, I think ambassador working groups also might have, I would be down to chat and see.
Yeah, I like that a lot, actually. Have some of the people that have been working on tasks. That's, that's a good idea.
But that, that would, yeah. But one thing I think really think we need is to start sharing that treasury in a sense that everybody who comes to town hall has some vote or some say what we're gonna do with that. Because right now, it's, we are like doing tasks, but we don't know are they needed and nobody gives like, nobody cares because no harm is done other than somebody's time is spent. But if we, if they see that the money they could got for something participating, even maybe training here, we could reward, we could like work together and swarm and get some gimbals and get some other tokens going, but have like this, like, yeah, some, some footprint on the chain, but also give people the feeling that they are spending their own money in a sense. Like everybody should feel like that in this group who are like, what we are spending for. And then when they feel like, oh my God, I was spending so much time on translations. Or last time it was brought up so much payment for the meeting notes. Then we can have that discussion and adjust the percent accordingly or like group that asks. And the same way, if you do it for like podcasts, let's say, like you mentioned, like 10%, then even, yes, it's not much like, well, I don't know, let's say it's like 600 Ajax. And it's like $60, but for project management, how well is like $50 already? So it isn't much, but if you just, we use that as a treasury, we also share, okay, 10% goes into project management, 10% goes to the visitors, 10% goes to the editors. They don't, yes, get paid enough, but they get part of the pie. They already feel the contribution, the way money is like distributed. And, and yeah, in future, it's just kind of like work out, probably the funds also can increase and work what they do also has more value.
Yeah, fully agree there. Let's see. I think, yeah, there's a couple of tasks on the next sheet. Could use those as an example. At the same time, a bit better preparation would make sense, I feel. But I fully agree with what you're saying.
Regarding interviews, a name got up before, John Hollings. Are we, is it more suitable to bring his name later in the show? Or because he is the deep funding guy. So if we're not gonna talk about deep funding in the first episode, otherwise he's a, maybe a good person to interview, maybe, I guess. I don't know how we want to do it.
Yeah, I definitely want to get him, I want to get him in for sure. And I've chatted with him and he said he's definitely interested and wants to do it. So I think we can get him in. I think the only thing to think about with that is getting him in at the right time. Just hearing you speak now, even if it's not a matter of doing an official interview with someone, there could be a couple of us in the channel where we actually do like a mock interview. We don't have to post it, but we could just use it 10, 15 minutes of trying to see whether my setup is going to work. So if I could get somebody else in the, in the community podcast or whatever ambassador program to just do a mock interview for a few minutes so we can see that it's actually going to work, then I can reach out to Young. Because yeah, I think, you know, he was definitely on the list there. I mean, but I just want to make sure that when we get him in there, that we're not going to botch the whole thing. And then we have a, you know, a half an hour interview with him that we can't use. And then that's not going to make anybody excited about that. Yeah.
Great idea. Great.
Okay. I'll put that down in my notes there. But yeah, I mean, one thing, Peter, I know we're getting really towards the end here. Is, is there a person in general in the bastard program like that you would highlight as someone was instrumental? Or a couple of people that are really instrumental in putting it off and getting it off the ground? And, and that would be, make sense to interview? If we're talking about that?
Well, that would be pretty much current attendance, I reckon.
Architect, I should take, definitely should have one.
I want to hear about Crandano.
Yeah, Crandano is definitely a big part of it too. Oh, cool. See you there. I didn't, I don't know if he's been here. I didn't notice him earlier. But yeah, so anyone who's interested, yeah, we could do that. So if somebody wants to volunteer, we can work on something here in the next couple of days where we just try something and see if we can get it to work. If no one has any thoughts yet or doesn't want to.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So Architect, you'd be interested in doing that then?
Yes.
Felix, stop it. Okay, we can talk about it later.
Felix, stay focused.
Recognize his voice after so little time. All right. Well, we can talk about it. I'll chat with you guys. I'll send some messages that we could talk to later about it.
Let's see. Yeah, just a quick update on some, some tasks. There's still, yeah, I mentioned earlier. Did add the make community update blog and the tasks for checking the submitted translations. And things that are still open is the Rejuve beta review. So far, I think Crandano is the only one who applied for that. So definitely make sure to ask him that in the interview. And there's also the one pager on the swarm session, which I don't think made it to D work. Okay, that's on me. Right after this meeting, you will find a task for this. So yeah, if anybody's interested, that's still a thing. Yeah. And then just a reminder of, reminder, yeah, we mentioned these type of tasks before already. I think I'll simply make them into D work as well. Because right now, yeah, they're, they're pretty vague. They're more like ideas, not, not, not actual concrete tasks with.
But now think about it, if, if we use the treasury, let's say we have now 20% allocated to people who take these ideas into part tasks. And then there is another people who are now forced to allocate rewards and create the task. Then it will come back and in, in like in this, I don't know, I don't, I don't think the town hall is the correct place for that. But maybe this is correct in a sense that it's piloting, like any working group. And then later there is gonna be like some kind of audit or governance working group who cannot look into that and like, oh my God, this idea is like here. But the, the cost of like executing that would be so much or like we don't, there are more priority tasks we need to do and the resources we have in here are the people who actually sign up. And I don't know, we don't have that many. So we'd rather focus on things which kind of help to build this program and these working groups rather than always trying to accommodate every idea. And yeah, so this, this, what, what this causes will then, when people come up with ideas, it's already like flashback, oh, this is gonna add work here. And people already voiced their opinion before it actually gets into the process. And then it also increases the more reason to come to these town halls or these places where this ideation actually happens. But yeah, it's a, it's a slow process, but not just giving you more insight why there is a treasury team and some distribution kind of.
Yeah, fair. So I take it on, where is it? This new group called Task Management. I take it you might be interested?
Yes, yes, of course. It's, it's kind of similar what we're doing right now. We just can't task manage because we're learning, creating crisis task management, but it's.
Yeah, like you said, in a way, it's still pilot phase, so it's bound to merge a bit into the tunnel sessions, I guess.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested in task management too. And I wanted to say, I know Crypto AI News was talking about interested in, in his interest in the metaverse presence. And I had made some notes on that as well. But that's basically, I have some just kind of thoughts and notes that I had written down towards that. I don't know where we would go from there. I'm not sure what they were able to, what Crypto was able to do over the last week also. That's that. And then I also was wondering, and this, I think I know the answer to this, but with the Rejuve, that's all done, the Rejuve beta, you need to have a smartwatch, Peter, obviously, right? To be able to do that.
No, not necessarily. It's an app. So if you have, yeah, like Fitbit or what's the other, the Apple one? You can get more results, like you can.
Because I was interested, I was interested in that, but I just thought that there was, I knew that that was the idea is that eventually it was going to be using smartwatches. But if there's still a need for people to do that, I'm interested. I just, I thought I needed a smartwatch. My wife has one, but she has, she has one. I don't. So I don't know. Is that still open?
If it's, I mean, it's about that. So for testing purposes, you could see what happens if you put her data in with your answers.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I mean, that's what I was going to ask is, because I mentioned it to her too, if she would be interested. And she was interested. It's just a matter of, yeah, talking to you and seeing.
Yeah, fair. Yeah, I think initially I went for three people, three slots. Yeah, that, that still stands, I reckon.
Okay.
But Crandano did indicate interest two weeks ago by now. And I just, let me check. Yeah, that's, that seems all good to go.
So I can just go into like the D work and assign it? And then I could find access to getting the app or whatever?
I would DM you about that, but yes.
Okay. Yeah, you should. Yeah, if you get, when you kind of be interested.
Can you say again where this application is so I can put it tomorrow? In Play Store?
The Rejuve app, you mean?
Yeah.
It's on the App Store, but you need an invite for it because it's not public yet.
You need what?
You need an invite. You need to be added to the testers, to the internal testers program.
Ah, okay.
So yeah, I'm afraid the, the, the won't be linkable.
Okay. I just have that as a meeting.
All right. See, yeah, I did mention it before, just a small update I wanted to provide on the rewards, but I think we covered this enough. Did make the tasks for the translation verification. Uh, yeah, that's also something I wanted to quick check on, um, on, um, sending the rewards for a translation, uh, whether or not to wait until it's verified by somebody or to simply go ahead and send the reward regardless of what the verification says. But not sure if that's the right topic right now to dive into, um. We can, I guess, we're fifteen minutes past the time. Maybe it's a better fit for, um, when we have separate sessions on the treasury team or however you want to exactly call that, uh, that work group.
Crazy, I'm making money.
Are you?
Okay, you're right, I'm not making money, I'm making just tokens.
Ah, you checked it. I see, I see.
Yeah, yeah, I opened it and.
I mean, you would think that you would want to have the translator, you know, the, the verification before you start doling out, um, tokens. Only, I mean, it's probably not often you would have somebody putting in a bad translation just to make the tokens, but it would seem like maybe you would want to have the verification also before you start giving them out, in my opinion.
I agree, I agree. I, I would rather say to these people who already done verification task and tell them that, hey, we have an issue that we don't have a verifier, but since you are a translator, you might know somebody, even your friend, to come and verify for it. And you can put the trust together. Yes, it might get, create this little odd situation where friends are doing task, but I don't see an issue that like, I don't know, some mother is doing translation and girl is doing verification. As long as it starts in, as it grows, as we show that this is place where you can earn some tokens and contribute to Singularity Net with your translation skills. It's, we're gonna build the trust network and the quality network. Just a, just a start, there might be some, some challenges. Alright, I, I wouldn't say it's a challenge. It's a collaboration and I don't see the issue based on who is the one who verifies it. Because it's the reputation in the end and it's kind of, it's like a karma. If, if you play, play games, then you're just not gonna get invited to better rewards or like less, less chance you cannot trust it.
I know, Peter, you were talking.
When the translation is a bounty, is the verification then also bounty? Because then you can say the process, for example, what if you started to say, yes, you want to educate the first, let's say, translators into verifiers? And you just need to prove them once in the beginning by that translation, then you have that where you know already, ah, okay, this are trusted translators, they are able to verify. And you can, you can include them in the whole bounty. Then you have several, let's say, for example, verifies, translators. And they can earn their part by the bounty as well by verifying each translation then.
Yeah, that's, that's the current setup. The verification, um, was a bit of an arbitrary number, uh, because you have to start somewhere, but it's set, uh, twenty-five percent of the translation task itself.
I was just gonna say, um, Crypto AI News was saying, I remember him, uh, whether I was there or not, I think I may have been there, but it may have been one of the first episodes of Town Hall where I wasn't there, but I watched it and he was speaking on uh, having Google Translate as one of the options. Um, I know, Peter, you were saying that you wanted to try both ways to see which one would work better. Am I correct in that, thinking that?
No, that was my initial thought, but later on it shifted a little bit, um, also based on, on a temperature check during, uh, I think during Town Hall, um, where basically it seemed to be the, yeah, general opinion like whatever, as long as we get the result, it's fine.
Mm-hmm. Which, yeah, I was just thinking like, if you're trying to verify, um, whether translator is good or whether a verification person is good, you could have a third point of using the Google Translate to verify that both of their work or to say, if both of them sign off on it, you could then have the Google Translate actually translated and see how closely that is as a check on and how well the translation was done. And then if you were to find, if we were to find that the Google Translate is really good, maybe, and I don't want to take the work away from the translators, I think that's great if we wanted to still do that, but if we find that the Google Translate is just as good as anyone else here translating, then maybe we can lean on that and find, I don't know, I just don't want to take the work away from the translators because I think it's good work and it's, you know, that's a way, that's a skillset they have and we want to utilize that, but if there's a way to bring in Google Translate and make it good, that would make it work the right way that way, then that gives us potentially more tokens and time of those people that would have been spent translating on, to, to work on other things. That's the only thing I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, it's a very, very valid concern, absolutely. I think, um, yeah, we, we're gonna have to test that. That's the only way, I think.
Peter, do you know that you can send in one transaction? Uh, uh, IJAX to two different people?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm. Okay, because I see it, they are two, two different transactions.
Um, well, I, I did not send those, but I will, yes, I will pass that along, that's, uh,
Ah, okay. I was just assuming that maybe in, in future there are gonna be a lot of every task, every person does the translation task, you can just pay with, with no recent extra transactions.
That's, that's one thing what we figured out with Swarm, for example, and we now say, oh, okay, now collect the bounties during the week. We captured them already and then on one day we make all one transaction each Monday and we all just put all transactions into one single one and, ah, that goes. So you don't have to be all the time behind making shitload of transactions with all the, all the, all the data.
Yeah, fair. Uh, I, I'm not sure why that happened, but, um, I will check because, yeah, it's just a waste of, um, well, one and a half data, but still.
Time, the time.
Alright, um, it's time to, uh, more or less wrap it up, uh, but not before an, um, open round, quick check if there's any questions, ideas or thoughts to be added to this meeting.
But Architect said yes?
Not again, Felix, you want me to talk every time. I have nothing with, I have nothing to say. We can have a separate chat if you want to, you know, we can talk all, all night long. Uh, but sorry, guys, I don't have really much, yeah, I just reflected on Julian's, uh, Metaverse, I just, you may be said that before, Julian, but that would be cool to have a podcast in Sophiaverse, but that's maybe another future.
Yeah, that was actually one of the ideas, uh, that I was having was, uh, actually, I watch a podcast from time to time, it's a VR podcast and they actually do the whole podcast in VR, so that was one of the things I thought eventually could be nice is we could do some of these town halls, and this is maybe way far down the line, but that could be fun, is doing that sort of thing, doing the podcast, doing the Bastard Program in sort of a Metaverse fashion in some way, whether it's VR or Central Land or something. I don't, I'm not super familiar with the Central Land, but something along those lines was what I was thinking too.
Yeah, that's a cool idea. I'm on it. Uh, otherwise, uh, sorry to disappoint you, Felix, I don't have more to say. And.
We call you later then for the, so we can chat the whole night.
Yeah. See you.
Alright, good stuff, um. I think that, uh, that wraps it up then. Thanks everybody for, uh, for your input and for attending. And we'll see each other on, uh, on Discord.
Thank you, Pete. Bye.
Thanks.
They didn't reach to the last four questions. But I hope to get answered to them.
Wait, what?
I know, I, this, this, you know, there is no agenda regarding that, but I was hoping that at some point, be- because it was over time. We've been up, like asking, uh, some call of call to action description, like who is part of Singularity Net and everybody kind of shares a bit, then what the Singularity Net does, like a small description. Or at least the resources where we could find it, so we could create like that. It's related to the Swarm Session one page, I think.
Fair.
Uh, I think I move it to the next week. We are not really, I think more, most important is think about sleep on the treasury thinking, like, how do you want the funds distributed in a way that everybody feels like they, they are part of that?
Yeah, definitely. I, uh, I did see over the weekend, I, I, I saw it too late unfortunately, but, um, for the, uh, I think it was not NFT goat, uh, Felix, help me. There was one session where you even threw tokens, uh, tokens for, for attending. I wa- I was curious to hear if that worked out or did, did it bring any result?
Yes, that's.
Holy shit.
Holy shit, it really did. It's amazing, yeah. Cause we made this with the Jimbo tokens and Jimbo tokens is a token which is developed by Jimbo Labs. So developer project, uh, community in Kadaan, amazing guys. You will meet them soon, huh, definitely. And we took the Jimbo's and said, okay, we use them as recognition, uh, recognition token. And to say, okay, because for example here, people joining the call, one and a half hours. Who is able besides the recording to map their contribution? And over the time, as your community cross becomes really important being able to record, to somehow track the contribution of your community members. And so we simply said, okay, for joining one Swarm Session, each participant receives one hundred Jimbo's. If they sign up for, then we send the Jimbo to them. We asked them already for the address, so we create our own sheet, our own database where we now link participants of live events where we have a beautiful, let's say, way to verify participation because those meetings are recorded. And then they send to YouTube. So we have a proof of life and proof of validation a little bit, the contribution already. And with the tokens then, we map it on the sheet. And over the time, what will happen? Yeah, when you join each week, two, three sessions, whatnot, this will make you already a serious amount of Jimbo tokens. And the big advantage now because this are Jimbo tokens which you earned by participating in the event and you can't buy Jimbo tokens means somebody which comes in now with million Jimbo tokens doesn't have any fucking value because he's not on your sheet, he's not on the database. He maybe received a Jimbo tokens, but he didn't receive the R S U, as they receive them with you in the community by participating and by validated participation. And this, when you think further allows a shitload of beautiful stuff, so. And we have a good community events in, in Katalis. All this local town halls already and all this stuff, so now we start to set up, okay, what happens when we do it there? And the same, what happens when we do this for Singularity Net, for example, to say, hey, we can make timestamp bounties for Singularity Net? And the bounty is there, instead of receiving eight hundred Jimbo's, they receive Jimbo's and A T I X.
Hey Felix, I just realized one thing we are not, uh, using right now because we rewarding, we're incentivizing people to join, but maybe we could also add like, um, Google Form or something where they have to, uh, at the start also Peter did it, uh, where people just vote on how did they feel about this session, so it's kind of give, gives even more quantifiable measures just to prove that they were here and they like participated and, and kind of make them fill out and maybe ask like one question we could ask, which takes like few minutes, um, max. And so we are not only just increase particip- participation, but also feedback to, to make to start improving that, uh, and, and kind of measure how, how the meetings themselves are going.
There's a lot to improve, I'd agree with this. And I think at the first, like we do usually, just the first steps and then letting it flow later and let, figure out the community, how it works then. I think what is really interesting to say, also for team tasks, for example, that you can say, oh, okay, they're meeting three people in a working group, working on a specific topic within the Bastardos Program, hey, rewire them, whatnot, rewire them, recognize the participation with a specific token. And that is simply allow somehow just the framework and being able as community to recognize each other's contribution. Not on a fully deep level yet, but on a really human, really simple level. And it's a lot needs to be improved and explored later because, yeah, actually the tools we need, we still don't have yet. And this could be, become a proposal in deep fund, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, that, that would be very cool. Yeah, it's like, for example, this afternoon, if I spend some time on a D Work session, well, yeah, that, that did not get recorded, um. I'm not sure if there's gonna be any traces of that, um, so yeah, that, yeah, would be cool if there's, I don't know.
Documents are the traces.
Uh, sorry?
The, the documents are the trace and the ongoing discussion because you kind of brought it up here with just more uh, focus, more preciseness, because at the time I probably were like too elaborate. But yeah, would, what others would think about having, getting tokens for participating here? Would they give an address to, to show that they were here today? And or not, if none of you care, then I guess it's not really something we, we, we need to like force for now or like do anything. But if you, if you feel like having a contribution token and, and, uh, trying to measure technically how we are participating, how, what we are contributing and later having like a pit list like of people who you see the name, you see the Discord name because it's connected to Discord. And then it's connected to blockchain, we kind of use the protocol, the technology to do these things. I see, I see, I see huge value, but I understand for many like, what, why don't we make our own token? And we could, we could literally just mint like million tokens and use that as a new measurement.
No, because then the question, who means the token? And, and a bunch of questions around, but much agree, yeah. What, what, what do you guys think? Would it may, would this be useful? For you to have recognition token?
I think it's great. I like that idea a lot. I think that's awesome. Having a way to track people's contributions in a better and better way, I think is great, you know? And it will encourage, it seems like it worked for you guys right away, but yeah, I think it'll encourage more people to, the more we can uh, track it and actually give people, you know, things for their contributions, the better. I think it'll encourage more and more collaboration and more attendance for Town Hall and I like it a lot.
Yeah, it's interesting. It makes me wonder, um, so far for, for attending yeah, meetings or events, um, there, there's this, uh, proof of attendance protocol kind of tokens like Pull Up, um, NFTs, that, that do get sent out, yeah, for all kinds of events. Um, but that's different than what you're doing with the Swarm Session, because there you're giving basically a, a fingable token, right? So there's some actual monetary value to that as well. If people want, they could go on and, and, and sell that.
Exactly. If it would be for sale. From our perspective, what is more interesting to say, if you have, for example, let's say, within the community, at the beginning you have participation. Participation transforms into contribution. Contribution transforms into reputation and into trust, which is a social credit. And the social credit is then changeable into financial resources. So going this line says on the beginning, you receive recognition token. After certain recognition, let's say, for example, you have like achievement level, say, hey, this person earned already 10,000. And this 10,000 has actual real value, because you can't buy the token. So to get the 10,000, this achievement is then, for example, mapped with an NFT. This NFT now becomes a badge. And this badge enables you, for example, then to say, hey, what we do, for example, with Swarm right now is, for the next four months, we pay around 20 people from the community with 22,000 US dollars per month. It's one proposals and stuff, just to say, how can we pay community contributions? And then to say, okay, right now they are selected because they are veterans and we know them since over one and a half year. We know about their commitment, but we just started with all this token stuff, so we are on the very same line, like you guys. We are not experts and fully audited in the whole stuff. We are on the very same line. But the main idea for us then is to say, okay, when we have then this constant recognition via token, you can build an achievement level, and the main goal for Swarm is to say, how can we bring community members full-time into the ecosystem? Because the most here are fucking passionate about what they do. They are not here for the financial incentives, they are mostly here for the social incentives and for the vision. And those people are really crucial to have full-time in the ecosystem. It's the only way as well to go into a transition of power. Because when you say, for example, SingularityNet wants to handle over, let's say, for example, my control to the community or my decisions, you can't achieve this with a bunch of people who take their engagement as a hobby. You need a serious amount of people who really engage full-time. And we do it with, for example, Swarm with submitting proposals, and all our proposals, all the funds are then distributed to the community, to simply revert their constant engagement contributions. Or by the pool, but market the fuck down, so pool doesn't fall off anymore. But that's the idea a little bit often, of the whole thing.
That's gonna be so valuable, all the lessons getting learned. It's a really cool approach.
The lesson is really this golden KPI, how many full-time community members do you have? That they can really actually really live well from their engagement. And it's possible.
Yeah, a bit jealous, but yeah.
And me, we are since longer than a year already full-time Kedano. So it works somehow, we figured out the way. It's hard, it's not cool. Because we're done blockchain, it's a fucking wide space. But yeah.
Yeah, good stuff.
But for example, when we said, hey, okay, the participation token might be valid, what I would definitely love to do to say, hey, this is something what we can propose as a service from Swarm to your community. We have the Jimbo's already, we have already our sheet, we can simply include it and the whole stuff there. You keep the Dwork and everything on your side. We simply, we have the treasure team already, this is another project which we created, where we say, ah shit, who holds the wallets? Who controls the wallet? That's always a typical topic, especially for a community initiative. We said, okay, let's outsource it. Let's take some really accountable and trusted people. They hold some wallets from the project and they make all the transactions. Just handle it out, we don't have here the politics, the send by send technical solutions. So let's go via human way. For example, so we have a bunch of services already where we could say, ah, okay, this is maybe something we could propose to you, to give you a boost already. You don't have to think about this stuff, but you can play around with this stuff. Because what we would do then is to do nothing else. Hey, we offer you this amount of tokens and play with it around.
And let us know how it works out.
Exactly.
That's amazing. I mean, what else can I say? Like, yeah, I would be very much down for that, so, yeah.
Yeah, I really like how Swarm's doing the whole treasury system and then how you guys have a channel for like all the receipts when you send the rewards out to people, has all the details and everything as well.
This is still very young, but starting to build it up seriously. So the transactions, for example, that's the thing with the trash brigade, all the incoming and outgoing transactions are directly mapped also over Dwork on Discord. Because one thing is, if you receive funds, what I think is maybe a little bit like the same like in Deepfund, very the same, as the fund proposal, you are accountable to the community. Means the community should have access and visibility on what the fuck happens with the funds you receive from them. So the approach we go is on Discord then to say, okay, we make everything transparent and each incoming and outgoing transaction is tracked on a Discord channel. Which makes it quite easy and accessible for people to see, ah, okay, where do the funds go to? Still on the very beginning, but yeah.
Just taking a quick peek at the Swarm bounty board section.
We can even start using task points for the weekly Town Hall meetings or the work groups as well, as some form of reputation as well, even if it's just like one point per meeting or something like that on Dwork.
Yeah, points go also used. We didn't, we had a discussion that we're gonna represent the one point somehow too, and then, I don't know, since we have tokens, we just do. But this contribution stuff at least has like the, creates the list of people into the top contributors page, and then people can see the people who are active, basically.
Yeah, that's awesome. Good way to go.
And then when you click in a Dwork to a person, then you see entire history of what he's actually do. So you kind of get the sense of, do you want to work with the person, you will be able to validate what kind of data and maybe even find your partner, how he is doing. Maybe guides, maybe he can help me to do a guide. But that, yeah, assumes that the people are already well versed in the Dwork and coordination and project management, and they don't feel like, oh, I should not talk to that person, I don't want to disturb them. Everybody is too humble here in these Singularity and Kedano groups.
Very interesting stuff. Need to let that think a bit then. Yeah, whether it's, I guess these task points would be relatively simple. I mean, that's already available, so. Automatically brings up the question on how to how to assess the values, you know?
Now we need the tokenomics code.
Yeah, I'd say at least for right now with task points, at least one point per task or a meeting would be a good way to at least start until we have another conversation about it.
I would say that tasks make themselves are probably like one point, and you can keep comma points, so meeting is like zero point twenty-five or something. Because here you can, you don't have to participate, you just listen and work it. But when you actually do something, a document, that's a very valuable thing, because this is something which will everybody else will see, and it's kind of like to the future, rebuilding. Both have value, but I think like jumping to meeting is, I feel like it's a less valuable.
Yeah, that's true.
I'd agree. Meetings have a huge value, because this is fucking important, because if you never meet with the folks you're hanging around, you will never build a healthy relationship with them. So it's really great meeting, really important, I think. And very valuable.
But it's only great if you don't get paid for it. But if people join here because they want to join here, it's even more valuable. And this is where actually the meeting shines.
That's much true, yes, I agree.
So basically what you would want is people who've full-time volunteer without compensation and still compensate them, so they can live a happy life.
Yes. Somehow. And all this in a healthier governance.
All we need to do is create meaningful work. And right now it's somewhat, I think we are doing meaningful work. Maybe for not everybody.
Well, yeah, that's getting there, I mean. Yeah, well, that's all philosophical debate, I guess, what is meaningful work. Alright, um.
Okay. We could even give it a try. Is it possible on the SingularityNet Dwork, is it possible for everybody to create tasks? No?
Um, I think I wanted to be able to do so, but then...
I think when the ambassadors right now can...
Yeah, I had to specify a role, but then again, I can... Yeah, for creating task, you need to be ambassador role on Discord. Which, right now, I think there's only three people. It's a bit arbitrary, honestly. Um, I am taking requests, I guess.
Oh, that's one became an ambassador.
Yell loud, loud and scream, SingularityNet is best!
There is no best, there are a bunch of great ones.
A bunch of what?
There is no best, there are a bunch of great ones, but not the best, I think.
Then you're not gonna be an ambassador, too bad.
Ambassador muted, but hmm.
I'm a Kedano ambassador, pretty good one. And I don't believe that Kedano is the best one.
It's more like what's best for you, you know?
Hmm, I was just kidding. I don't know. You still have to yell and then you get it. The more noise you make, the higher chance you get the ambassador.
Pete, 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 I need this floor, because I would love to simply set up a task, assign everybody from today's Discord to the task who is on Dwork and send out 100 Jimbo's. Just to give it a try and do it.
We could just make, as for now, felt like they want to do the points and just make it that same Dwork and just allocate points.
Well, you can make tasks now if you feel like. Oh, that's unfortunate. Right before I get through the list, lion drops off. Well, okay. But yeah, so far, I figured there should be some set of rules at least for people being an ambassador, but I'm with the people right here, there's, yeah. Plenty of, um, I don't know, just attending all the time, that qualifies already, I feel.
That should be all, yeah. And also always, if you start stuff, also know to stop stuff. When you recruit ambassadors, make sure you also have a process and place to kick ambassador.
Interesting, yes.
Because humans change and shit happens. And comes to situations where one person is not able to anymore to represent a whole group, because he's so heavily moving outside that his role as ambassador is linked to all other ambassadors as well, who tries to, who aims to represent. And if a person acts too weird, then you need to protect those who don't act too weird, right?
Yeah, that's very true. The same as, um, in a way, it's also, I noticed this with Telegram admins, which, yeah, but before this ambassador program started, they were kind of, practically speaking, at least on Telegram, they were the... Um, yeah, that group is also, I mean, there's no active process for checking for activity, let's say, and then certain amount of activity, you get kicked or anything like that. But there should be, you're quite right there. It can be, doesn't need to be super harsh, of course, but at least some, um, yeah. Some process.
What will appear if you take the ambassadors program serious? There will be a bunch of scenarios where you have very deep ethical questions. What should be ambassador be? How should this ambassador act? What is the code of conduct? What are the guidelines? Because those people, you want them. We try to see the Kedano ambassadors a little bit like ideal citizens, who are able to represent the protocol as the community on the best way somehow, on a good standard. But if you, there will appear a bunch of stuff, especially as it's still very young and it will grow and it will attract more people and more and more and whatnot. Did I lose my line? Wait, give me a second. I will find it back. Ah, yes, and there will appear a lot of situations though where ambassadors will also have to, will misreact. And nobody knows then really, hey, who has to say something? Is it SingularityNet? Is it the Foundation? Is it the community? In the best case, you want the community to handle this, also the ambassadors. I think in Kedano, for example, what appeared on the very beginning was already a guild and the ethics guild. So ambassadors who came together as their own initiative, this was years ahead already, it came together as an ethical ambassador scale. And wanted to make sure, hey, do the ambassadors stick to what we try to represent or what we try to achieve. Because mostly then it's the ambassadors who have the better picture about them, the foundation who's doing, for example, the ambassador program. So seeing just from the history of Kedano, for example, there was a missing support also for this ethic council. So it vanished away somehow. And this was really bad. This was a moment where a lot of high-quality Kedano ambassador jumped off and went off because they couldn't agree anymore to the direction it took, simply because so many other people came. Because for now, for example, you can see, ah, okay, it's just, there's a certain style of people right now in your community. In four or five years, it will be different, right? I mean, we started somehow on the same time, but yeah, still. Yeah, well, shit, I hope I, I arrived to express myself well. Just take it serious, take ethical stuff serious and take it serious that the community has a process and place to make decisions. And it's not everything all the time up to the entities. Already from the beginning, starting with five, it's easier than starting with 5,000, I like.
Kind of needs another work group. I'm curious at what point that will actually pop in, without getting like a, yeah, ethics kind of group.
Then AI, it's general, it would be really important to have something like an ethics group. A lot of people when they hear about AI.
And then?
Wait. Regulations, please, and is there ethic something to any AI, AI? A SingularityNet... A Singularity Net has something like this? An ethic council?
Well, there's a supervisory council which kind of checks in on what the board is doing and it aims to be a bridge between the community and the board. But it's not that active, not as active as it should be or could be. But it's also not purely focused on ethics. But there's even portions of the community which argue against this whole approach of trying to yeah, reach ethical consensus. I mean, they're more vocal than, they're pretty vocal for the amount of people they are.
I can't read that.
Oh, it's just like, oh, you're politicizing things. Like, yeah, well, guess what? Yeah, it's not really the intention, but it's more like how to, how to avoid, like... We get a lot of pushback when we push on diversity, for example. But to me, it's really crazy because, I mean, if you're gonna build towards an AGI, that needs to be there for all humans, whether they're gay or not, let's say, or whatever, you know? Like, it needs to be diverse. It's like, just a given to me, like, there's no way of arguing against it. And then, that's my personal opinion, of course, yeah, just focus it.
So this is interesting what you said, that diversity is not, there used to be a pushback because in Cardano it's exactly the same. For example, each proposal where you have diversity and inclusion on the title, forget about it. You will never get it both.
Yeah, well, in a way that shows the importance. Yeah, I don't know. It's weird, it's just, it's just, yeah, a couple of very vocal conservative people, I guess. But numbers-wise, seems like most community members would agree that, well, if you're, yeah, building this super smart AI, that's the end goal, right? Needs to be a good version, a benevolent similarity. You cannot have racism, yeah.
When speaking about stuff like this, I don't think that, for example, in blockchain communities we want to have, let's say, councils or whatnot. But more like people where you know, ah, okay, they can provide a certain guide and support. So for example, when people come, they have a comment, "Hey, what do you think here and there?" But you know, hey, there is a group of people which are able to provide a very insightful and effective feedback and guidance. But not being the judge making the decision on any shit.
Well, that's what a council would do, right? You go there for counseling.
Councils are more decision-making body anyway.
Yeah, fair.
There's a whole bureaucratic body around and whatnot.
I get what you mean, sorry, didn't want to like nip back on definitions.
I think there are two types of council. One council helps you to get through with your marriage and another one helps you to take a decision on a difficult topic, like a mediator, but not giving you an advice, but just making the third party decision, like a jury.
Yeah, fair.
Although I might say, I did like to tea whatever the USA you have, Amberheart and Shoni Deputrier and listen in these experts creating their statements on facts, like, "Whoa, we have this, it's so weird and interesting how the charge system works and how annoying these charges can be." Not charges, but defenders can attack them, like, yeah, the enemy two seconds or whatever. Imagine this happening in town hall, somebody comes up with like, "Yeah, no, this has this issue," or my god, and then, cannot. But at some point, it makes things progressive and really actually data-oriented. So yeah, how do we get there without making it feel too forceful or like, I don't know, annoying and not useful?
Yeah, that's the real question, right?
Just a more easy question for a second, Pete, because on the board, you said normally should be able to create a task, no?
On, uh, let's see, I think everybody should, oh wait, I checked for translation. Maybe it's for the team tasks, it's a different setting, let me check.
Ah, okay.
Annoying that it's separate, but, no, no, they're both...
I think I was able to do tasks on both.
I can't.
Maybe you need to press, like, refresh a little because I just gave you the role? Maybe it needs to like, I don't know, update or, or maybe I need to update it actually somewhere, I'm not sure. Or refresh the, you know?
Write it already, but still can't see the plus icon there.
Maybe try Ctrl F5. If that doesn't work, then it may be just not working right away. Because I did have a Dwork issue today and I also created in daily Kanban desk, like a task or community succession, that if you create a task, submit the work and you revoke your own work, you can no longer submit your own work. Which is, technically you don't need that, but it was annoying because, oh, I wanted to do that thing again, but I couldn't.
I'm not sure. I'm not too well versed in Dwork troubleshooting yet, but yeah, from this side, it seems all good.
Maybe an issue on my app, but I don't want to take any part.
Well, actually, I can see on the contributors page, it does not recognize your ambassador yet.
Yeah, might only pull those details from Discord every couple hours or something.
There should be like a brute force refresh button somewhere, I feel.
No, let's give it some time to upload and check in later.
No. Brute force. Oh, actually, there's a, did you guys check out the... Apparently in the settings stuff, you can also mint NFTs for the... With the task metadata of the work you complete. Not sure if this rings a bell.
No, but sounds like Ethereum chain stuff for now. Although, Singularity and both chains.
Yeah, yeah, it's ERC 721, so yeah, you're right. That's, okay, that's gonna be stupidly expensive, but okay. That's weird.
We need the Cardano integration.
Yeah, would be cool, absolutely. Then we just have to make sure that... If we, like, if we're setting the bar a bit low for people to be able to create tasks and assign rewards and then complete tasks.
Not rewards, recognition. It's only recognition. I think that's really important to mention because you don't, do not really want to reward people. You just want to recognize the contribution.
Well, yeah, sure, I agree, but at the same time, we're also, like this translation task, for example.
Ah, yeah, sorry.
Just any tasks, like, there are tasks with financial or token compensation and then if that's, let's say the Cardano integration is live, then would anybody with an ambassador tag be able to also allocate these rewards? How would that...
That's a good question, actually.
So I don't think it will be abused, but it would be a bit shit if it would be abused.
You see, it's really important to have criterias for ambassador.
Yeah, it's easy to say when you're already qualified.
Now I'm an ambassador, you can't kick me anymore. You don't have any legitimacy to kick me. Show me the, show me the roots first.
Oh, Dwork must be updating slowly. I think I'm gonna call it a day, actually. Yeah, always need a little bit of zoning out before sleep and tomorrow starts early.
Nice. Peter, could you send me the details to get the Rege Beta app whenever you have time?
Yes, I first need to request you to be added to that list, but I got the green light earlier, so it should be progressing, yes.
Oh man, sounds good. Appreciate it.
And when you can, Peter, if you could just, if you're interested in having me help out with the Rege Beta 2, I'm interested, so you can send me over like an invite link or whatever you need to do.
Yep, yeah, I did not, did not at that time.
Great.
Well, actually, if you want, I think you can apply in Dwork.
Okay.
Let me check if that's still...
Next workgroup's on Thursday, right, guys?
Uh, yeah, 15 UTC, right, Tivo? Was that what you wanted to do about the Dwork?
Yeah, I believe so.
That was what we had talked about, I believe, yeah.
Felix, are there any other Swarm meetings this week besides the Saturday ones?
Tomorrow is Inside Fest, then we have the After Town Hall. On Friday, the Africa Town Hall and on Saturday, the Swarm Session. And on Thursday, the After Town Hall.
Okay, nice.
And when you go on the Catalyst Swarm website on building community, normally you can find the events.
Thanks, Ben.
Site fucked down some weeks ago, but yeah, we repaired. Normally should be. We are building, we are setting up a page on the Swarm website for a Singularity Night as well. They are, whereas the community, when do events happen, we have to try.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, definitely. Good stuff.
Alright, have a good day, guys.
Yeah, you too.
Yep, thanks again and see you around.